Good evening, everybody. The special meeting of the ISD 279 School Board is called to order at 6:04 PM on November 13th, 2020. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.021, in a current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this special meeting in the Independent School District 279 School Board will be conducted via electronic means. Consistent with the current state and federal pandemic guidelines, Superintendent Corey McIntyre and myself, Board Chair Mike Ostafi, have determined that due to the health pandemic and emergency declaration, a meeting format allowing for board member in-person attendance is not practical or prudent for this meeting. Members of the public may monitor the meeting electronically by streaming online via the district website, and up to 12 members of the public may view the video conference on the monitors in the boardroom at the ESC. Board members, please respond that you are present on this video conference when I call your name. Director John Bristol?
Here.
Director Kelsey Dawson Walton?
Here.
Director Tanya Simons?
Here.
Uh, Mike Ostafi, I am here. Director Jackie Muscata-Jones?
Here.
Director Heather Douglas?
Here.
And Superintendent Corey McIntyre?
Here.
Oh, we didn't hear you, but you're here, I guess.
Here.
General Counsel Tim Palmetier is also logged into this video conference. Board members, will you please all join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Board members, in front of you is the agenda. We've had that. Are there any additions to the agenda? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as written?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the Board Secretary will now conduct a roll call vote. Sherry?
Director Bristol?
Aye.
Director Dawson Walton?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Muscata-Jones?
Aye.
Director Ostafi?
Aye.
Director Simons?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
Okay, motion passes. The agenda is now approved. First action item on tonight's agenda is a resolution canvassing returns of votes of the school district general election. Mr. Palmetier will provide the information. Mr. Palmetier?
Thank you, Chair Ostafi, School Board members, and Superintendent McIntyre. If you'll allow me, I actually will introduce our first two resolutions simultaneously here. Under Minnesota law, the school board serves as the canvassing board in school district elections. Pursuant to Minnesota statute, the board is required to meet and canvass the election returns and declare the results between the third and 10th day after the general and special school board election. In preparation for the canvass tonight, the board has been provided an abstract return of votes cast and write-in report that set forth the accumulated results from the school district's multiple precincts for the following election contests. First, the general election of November 3rd, 2020, to fill three vacancies on the board by expiration of term effective January 2021. And, second, the special election of November 3rd, 2020, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of former director Jessica Craig. On review of the abstract and return of votes cast and the write-in reports, the board is required to declare the results of the such declaration resolution before the board tonight. And it is required to sign the abstract accepting the official result of the election. That has already been provided to the board by Ms. Lincoln. So with that introduction, Chair Ostafi, I will turn it over to you for consideration of the two res, the first two resolutions.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution canvassing returns of votes of the school district general election?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the Board Secretary will now conduct a roll call vote. Ms. Lincoln?
Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Ostafi?
Aye.
Director Muscata-Jones?
Aye.
Director Dawson Walton?
Aye.
Director Bristol?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
All right, thank you. Next up, is there a motion to approve the resolution canvassing returns of votes of the school district special election?
So moved.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, I didn't hear anybody. You've been cutting out, so let's start again. Is there a motion to approve the resolution canvassing returns of votes of the school district special election?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion? Thank you. Is there any discussion? The Board Secretary will now conduct a roll call vote. Ms. Lincoln?
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Muscata-Jones?
Aye.
Director Bristol?
Aye.
Director Dawson Walton?
Aye.
Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Ostafi?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I'm not hearing most of you say aye, and it's cutting in and out. I don't know if that's a general issue or one with just my location, but I just wanted to bring it to someone's attention to see if there's a general issue going on.
I'm having a leg. So I'm hearing it, but it's pretty delayed.
I'm hearing it fine, although Tim had was cutting out slightly at the beginning.
Okay, I'm hearing.
Same, Tim was cutting out.
We're hearing all fine here through the system.
Yeah, Tim, Tim definitely had was, was cutting out, and some of the rest of you are also cutting out. Just make sure we all speak clearly. Wait till the microphone comes on, give it a second, and then speak, and hopefully everything will catch up.
Chair Ostafi?
Yes.
Uh, I did turn off my, uh, my headphones, so I'm wondering if that might be better.
Oh, yeah, you're a little off sync, but I can hear every word you say. So, thank you. Let's move on. The next agenda item is the resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties. Mr. Palmetier?
Thank you, Chair Ostafi, School Board members, and Superintendent McIntyre. Pursuant to Minnesota statute, the school district is required to issue certificates of election to each successful candidate after the time for contesting elections has passed, which is seven days after the board's declaration of the electric, election results here tonight. In addition, the clerk is required to undertake additional ministerial tasks to effectuate and assist the election board members to assume their office, written acceptance of the office, and also including a written oath of office. The third resolution before the board tonight authorizes the issuance of certificates of election and other election-related duties.
Thank you, Mr. Palmetier. Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the Board Secretary will now conduct a roll call vote. Ms. Lincoln?
Director Ostafi?
Aye.
Director Dawson Walton?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Bristol?
Aye.
Director Simons? Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Muscata-Jones?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
All right, thank you, everybody. Next on the agenda is the Osseo Area Schools Learning Model. Superintendent McIntyre, floor is yours.
All right, thank you, and good evening, everyone. I, I can hear you fine, so, and I did get confirmation from Anthony that it seems to be working well, so I will keep moving forward, but thanks for checking in, Chair Ostafi. But good evening, board members, and thank you for spending your Friday evening together. Thank you for your continued work on our ISD 279 learning models and our key readiness indicators dashboard. I do want to mention, I continue to appreciate your support that you've shown through your actions in regards to our learning models, from delaying the opening of the school year to distance learning, to our K-12 hybrid model and our current model with secondary schools and distance learning starting this past Monday, all working to be in alignment with the safety components of the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan. Tonight, I'm bringing a new recommendation in response to the very rapidly changing conditions we are seeing. I'm asking the board to approve my recommendation for the last day of elementary hybrid to be on Thursday, November 19th, and move to the model of distance learning for pre-K through 12, starting on Monday, November 23rd, while still providing some in-person instruction and services for students with disabilities who, whose individual programs call for intensive services that cannot be provided in distance learning. Next, I'll briefly present the updated information. That's the basis for this recommendation. Turn on my presentation here. And someone could just give me a verbal, once that does pop up, I would know we're good to go.
It's up.
Thank you. All right, as we've shared many times here, our current readiness dashboards reflect 10 key readiness indicators for each learning model, and those readiness indicators inform our decisions to change learning models while meeting state requirements based on case rate data and in consultation with the Minnesota Department of Education, Minnesota Department of Health, and Hennepin County Public Health, which I'll update you on in a moment. Our ISD 279 Safe Learning Plan levels is our version of the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan, and it reflects currently our Level 3 model of elementary hybrid and secondary distance learning, which we started November 9th. There are three overarching considerations we've been really talking about throughout this process, and I thought I'd capture that here when we've been making our learning model decisions, and we've really been looking at most closely our community impact from county and city case rate data, looking at our operational effectiveness, really one of our key readiness indicators, with recently a primary focus on staffing, absences, and sub availabilities, and our ability to operate our schools. And also then our school, in-school safety considerations, as we've been really looking at district case rates of positive symptomatic and close contact cases. This is our decision-making framework to, that we've been using here consistently throughout this process with five primary steps, and that first step reflects looking at data from county, city, district, and school case rate data, those positive symptomatic and close contact cases, along with our learning model readiness indicators, also in a required consultation with MDE, MDH, also consulting with our Department of Public Health at Hennepin County, and our other stakeholders, and bringing that information forward to you as a board. Whenever there's a district-wide decision that needs to be made with a recommendation, and once that decision's made, communicating that out to our stakeholders of that implementation. The state model parameters chart, we've looked at each time as well. We're going to continue to do that here tonight. Just quickly, looking through, we've really seen us move through the different levels and parameters reflected here. Most recently, we've been in that 30 to 49 range, which put us into that hybrid learning for elementary and distance for secondary, and identifying that 50-plus threshold for distance learning for all students. As I mentioned, school districts need to take into account those data, but also our city level and our district and school level information that we've been studying the last few weeks. I'm providing you the most up-to-date case rate data from Hennepin County through November 2nd that we received this week. The Hennepin county-wide case rate saw another, really an unprecedented record increase again, with the county rate, county-wide rate increasing nearly 20 points, to put the current status of that case rate at 57.6, surpassing that threshold of 50. Our citywide data is updated here as well, and we can see, again, large increases in our major cities in our district. Brooklyn Park saw an increase of over 21 points, and is now at 78.5. Brooklyn Center saw an increase of over 13 points, and is now at 74.5, um, point eight, excuse me. And Maple Grove saw, again, our largest increase at over 26 points, and is now at 68.4. Plymouth also saw an increase of over 16 points, is now, is also over that threshold of 50 at 51.8. So again, these are unprecedented record increases. We expect to continue to see those based on consultation of our state and county officials, which you'll hear more about in just a moment, but that does move us into the consideration of that learning model, full distance learning for all students. Just a highlight of some of our district case rate data, we won't go as deep as we did Tuesday night at the work session, but just some high level, because we do have some updated data here for you. Since the beginning of our efforts to collect this on August 20th, we've seen 232 positive cases that have been identified now in 22 of our sites. We went up 63 cases this past week, which is about a 27% increase, with roughly 68% of those new cases are students and 31% staff estimated. Our symptomatic cases, we've had now 803 cases this year, up about 15% from our last board review of this, when you made the last decision on October 30th, with about 105 symptomatic cases this past week in, identified in 27 of our sites. When looking at our close contact cases reported, we now have had over 1,300, about 1,377 cases this year, which have been identified in 32 of our sites, and the increase of 313 since our October 30th meeting is about a 30% increase. One additional piece of data that we've been considering is trying to give a, give another way of looking at the impact on our staff and students, so to try to get a comparison to that 14-day case rate that this county and city uses, here's a estimation of our district case rates, when you take our students and staff together within our district, gives you a, really the goal here is to give you a sense of the increase we're seeing. So, week of the, end of the week of October 29th, on that Thursday, you were at about 23 cases per 10,000, and then last week jumped to 43, and now this week we're up to over 55. Again, not as high as some of our city case rate data, but definitely increasing at a rapid rate and over that 50 threshold. So this is another way to have some insights on how this is impacting students and staff within the district. You did hear from Laurel Anderson the other night around staffing impacts right now operationally, and I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on there, because there is some little bit of an update on the data here. So, we have had 72 teachers and 43 ESPs absent on average each day this week. As mentioned earlier in the week, our average sub-fill rate right now is only 55%. In years past, it's been closer to 80 to 90%. We've had 12 sites now with teacher absences over 10% or higher. We've had 11 sites with ESP absences over 10% or higher. And as you heard the other night, about 105 of our 330 teacher subs have subbed this year, which is only a 32% hit rate right now, and 97 of our 344 ESP subs have subbed at least once this year, oh, which is a 28% rate. And we've had, as you heard, Ms. Anderson say the other night, that we've had 38 new subteachers hired this year, seven into teacher positions, and six into regular status positions. So, at, as our positive symptomatic and close contact cases continue to rise, we are at a point of having a number of schools who simply cannot operate in the hybrid model, and will have to likely move to distance learning due to the number of illnesses and lack of substitutes. Here's a, just a quick, brief look at the teacher absences at the elementary level. You can see in the far right from the most impacted, kind of working your way down, as far as the number or percentage of absences. I mentioned that we're on 10 buildings here, actually have 12 sites that I believe have over 10% of their teaching staff averaging absences this week. And then here's a quick look at our ESPs with 11 sites with 10% or more, and you can see some pretty large numbers here of over 30% in some areas and well over 20 in others. So we're clearly seeing across a number of our buildings, a high impact on our ability to continue to operate many of our schools. It's definitely creating much operational stress for us. And to update you on the consultation with our, our required consultation with MDH and MDE and, and our Hennepin County team, regional support team, the, the feedback we got this week and the way that it's been described by our county is we are seeing an explosion of cases in Hennepin County. We've probably seen that, and it's not surprising. They shared with us that, you know, these are frightening numbers, and it's a highly critical time right now in the county and really across the state. We also were informed that they're having a very hard time keeping up with contact tracing demands, as this is a really unabated, not a controlled situation from a rapid growth in case numbers. Positivity rate has escalated dramatically, really about three times over their normal threshold for concern, roughly at 15%, and their 5% has been their threshold for that concern level. The countywide rate is now well over 50, that threshold for a model change, and we did hear that next week, it's projected to hit that number of 70 or higher in the countywide rate. So with that in mind, and talking through our current model and readiness, key readiness indicators, the MDE and MDH strongly recommended us for a model change to our, to a full distance model by November 23rd. And they also shared that, and I've learned this through a number of meetings even again this morning, with the regional metrowide superintendent's meeting, that many districts are kind of experiencing what we are experiencing with very challenging staffing situations, to a point where it's very taxing on their system, and with so many people out due to quarantine. I mean, there's about 27 districts right now that I'm aware of that plant, have already or plan to move to distance learning by early December, December 1st, and by Thanksgiving week. Just to touch base on our key readiness dashboard, so we spent a lot of work getting ready for the school year and spent time in distance learning as we started the school in September, and I'm sorry again, so that this is a little small and hard to read, but my, I just let you know that we have prepared for this distance learning model and have been at it already for a couple of weeks this year. So with a delayed start by four days, preparing, you know, at the beginning of the year, spending those two weeks in distance learning before moving to hybrid, we are prepared to quickly move to that distance learning model. So with that, I just have a couple additional comments as I finish up my recommendation here. As I've communicated previously, we expected movement among these learning models throughout the year, and we know how hard that is on our students, our families, and our staff based on the evolving virus activity. We are seeing that accelerated rate of positive cases in our communities and in our district numbers, and we need to collectively stay committed to those primary health precautions of wearing masks, social distancing, and avoiding large groups. Without the ability to do that well, we're going to continue to see higher positive cases and higher numbers in, in our system, which will really impact our ability to, and all of our desires to move as fast as we can to in-person learning safely. So in closing, you've, you've heard, heard me say it many times before, I'm going to stop presenting here, like, to you all. Please know that I, I recognize the, the level of frustration, the level of exasperation so many are feeling, and I, I really wish we didn't all have to experience this level of uncertainty. For so many, this is a lot of stress, for, for others, it just brings relief when we move into the models, and you've heard from parents who strongly feel, have strong opinions on both sides of any model we're in. And please know, I understand there's no easy answer here, and there's no real easy way to please everyone in these decision-making processes. We'll continue to do our best to base these decisions on state direction and guidance as we receive updated information very frequently. I do want to, please, I want to share my appreciation for patience and understanding as we know how hard it's been for students, families, and our staff. But know that our goal is always to ensure that we're doing our best to provide our scholars with the best educational experience and doing it as safely as possible. So, Chair Ostafi, as I turn it back to you, my recommendation is for the last day of elementary hybrid to be this coming Thursday, the 19th, and move to the model of distance learning pre-K through 12 on Monday, November 23rd. Thank you, Chair Ostafi.
All right, thank you, Superintendent McIntyre. Board members, do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to move elementary to distance learning, resulting in the district-wide pre-K to 12, uh, district-wide pre-K to 12, distance learning starting Monday, November 23rd, 2020?
So moved.
We have a motion to move to distance learning, starting Monday, 20, Monday, November 23rd, 2020. Do we have a second?
Second.
Director Wilson, Director Dawson Walton, that was a second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. For discussion, I will now call on each board member. Director Douglas, any questions?
Thank you. I did have one question about the staff absences that you showed. There was a category that said, "No sub needed." Can you explain that, please?
Yeah, thank you for asking, Director Douglas. Those would be teaching positions that are part of our teacher group that may not be particularly a classroom teacher, that would not necessarily require a substitute. So other staff under a teaching contract that have a different role in the building.
Okay, um, so I'm just a little bit confused. Why wouldn't a sub be needed to fill those roles?
It's more along the lines of there may not be subs available. We have certain specialists that really we do not have a sub pool for, so there's a combination, or it could be a particular specialist, a number of our specialist positions, we just do not have a sub for those kinds of roles in the, in the buildings.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
All right, thank you, Director Douglas. Director Muscata-Jones, give me questions.
I do have having most issues, thank you. Assuming that if we go to the full distance model, will teachers have a chance to work from the buildings at all? Is that an option?
Sorry, Director Muscata-Jones, I didn't mean to talk over you. So right now, there is an executive order that requires people to work from home unless their essential functions cannot be met at home and can only be met in the building. So we do have a process right now, if that's the case. So for example, if teachers need access to technology or their materials for construction, that they would get that permission from their supervisor.
Corey, let me follow up with that, because is it an executive order requiring people to work from home unless they can't, or us allowing them to work from home unless we can't? Please be.
Requiring them from work, from, to work from home unless they cannot, unless their essential functions cannot be met at, at home.
May I ask the follow-on question? Would that, you know, if, if a teacher has a home situation that's not conducive to them performing their duties, are they exempt, or, or, you know, for example, maybe they live in too small of an area, maybe they have lots of children themselves at home? I mean, is there anything we can do to mitigate that issue and help them?
So there's lots of different scenarios, like you pointed out, Director Bristol, and that's why we want them to work that through their supervisor based on their unique set of circumstances, because there are so many different scenarios in that regard, and we're, what we want to be able to do is provide our staff the ability to be as effective as they can.
Thank you.
We just cannot require them to be onsite.
I'd like to follow.
Go ahead.
Yes, to that end, so is there a particular process of appeals in that? Because I know of many, if, I'm assuming that we're all under the same executive order, and I know of many, many people who are able to go into a work environment in the private sector, when their home is not conducive, it does, it, it feels like there's quite a bit of latitude and flexibility. So is there an appeals process if the direct supervisor does not allow for that?
Yes, and I hope that you're hearing me. We're, we're trying to provide that flexibility as well, especially the more, we move into the deeper into the year, and just moving into, you know, of our models and learn more about what it takes to be effective in the roles. So, yes, that is our intention, is to provide as much flexibility as we can.
Okay, thank you. And Director Muscata-Jones, since we all followed up. And Director Muscata Jones, since we all followed up for you, do you have any more questions?
Yeah, I do. Can you help us all understand what the man, the latest mandate is? On working with our kids with special needs? Who need intensive services? Like. Is there any kind of guidance of when? We have to have them in the building and when we don't have to have them in the building or conversely. The other way around, I'm just, I'm concerned about. The safety with the numbers going up to seventy and eighty per ten thousand for our students. And I do want them to get the services that they need and I want to make sure that we have options if they do work from home or if they do have to be at home. But I also am concerned about their safety.
Yeah, this is a, you asked a really challenging question. This is one we've been wrestling with, all of the districts have been wrestling with, there's. The baseline guidance is from MDH is to continue providing services unless there's an outbreak. Or there's some reason with the virus that will preclude us to provide that, whether it's students or staff illness. And you've heard us talk about, you know, we're walking a thin line with, you know, staffing. There is no threshold or cut score. Talking with many districts around the metro, we all are intending to provide services for as long as we can, as long as we can do it safely. And if we hit that threshold, we would likely have to cease doing so.
May I just ask a clarifying question? What, what is the, what is the definition of an outbreak?
There isn't one other than we consult with our MDH officials and our local context. What does that mean for that particular classroom or that particular school? You know, we have wide-ranging sizes of classrooms and school buildings. So it's really kind of a decision we make with the information we have regarding the kind of a situational case-by-case analysis.
In a follow-up to that Superintendent McIntyre, if MDE and MDH and the governor have. Declared that it is unsafe above a fifty case rate for our regular students. Why would they allow our most emotionally and our most medically challenged students to come into the building and have in-person face-to-face learning?
Cause they are the ones that have had the largest and hardest time having their goal, their individualized needs met in a distance format. So as long as we can provide the required protections to staff. We're trying, if you read the order, the language is to prioritize that full services.
Okay, medical issues, I guess, okay. All right, sorry about that.
Again, I'm sorry, Cheryl Stoffey, just to clarify, you know, that is a, it's not required for families, they, many will opt out if, you know, if there are medical related. Issues and I should have mentioned earlier too, it is a IEP-driven decision at a, you know, student-by-student level with their, with their educational team. So I'm sorry for talking over you there.
So I just. I just wanted to clarify that that, as always, it's always an individual team decision. Families at home listening. Just because we say level three doesn't mean it's going to be one way or another, you have to talk to your case manager. And that case managers have. A say in how that goes, for instance, if there's a case manager that. Says their student did really well in distance learning, even though they qualify under a certain diagnosis, would that be taken into consideration?
Superintendent McIntyre, will, will we be putting out specific approved communication from the district on that? And with clarifying information?
We already have been doing that and again, it's following their already established IP process for making those determinations. Doctor, or Dr. Director Muscata Jones, you're a doctor now.
Almost ABD.
Yeah, I think, you know, families and our staff working together to make those determinations.
I figured I just wanted to clarify that. And. Okay, and. When we're talking about special ed, are we can, are we also including the OEC?
Yes, thank you.
I've also gotten concerns from people about how long it's been taking.
I, I know we can go through all the emails that people have written in, I would like to give some other folks time to ask their questions, we'll go around to a second one. But if we could, if we could keep moving along.
With all due respect, Chair Stoffey, people have done follow-up questions during my questions. So I feel like people have gotten a chance.
This is fourth or fifth question, I would like others to ask their direct questions, but if you would like to, please go ahead.
I will yield to the next person.
Okay, thank you, Director Bristol, do you have any questions?
Yes, how does this impact extracurricular activities?
Yeah, at this point, as most districts were the same, we're going to continue to move forward with athletics and activities until we either can't because of a outbreak or quarantine situation. Or we get direction from the High School League or MDE. And. Until then, we'll continue moving forward just as we, as you determined last, at our last meeting.
Okay, cause I just wanted to clarify that now that we're all over the fifty threshold, we can still continue to do that. So that the teams that don't tend to have an issue at the moment, as long as they can continue to stay healthy, they can continue.
Until we're directed otherwise by, you know, the state, you know, agent or organization, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you Director Bristol, Director Dawson Walton.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, three. One, you know, it's kind of related to the previous questions in that, you know, Superintendent McIntyre, we've heard you say a couple of times that. You know, when you meet with other superintendents, there's a lot of the same. There's a lot of the same kind of conversation around certain issues around the executive order, the data. You know, kind of how we're determining and making our decisions. Will there be any, will the superintendents ever come together, even in Hennepin County to. Really share the same concerns to our, to the governor, to MDE, to MDH? Because it's causing a lot of uneasiness, confusion, frustration and truly division in our district. And I know that it's happening in districts across, but of course we're focused in our district that we're representing now. And so from, you know, the activities through intensive services to. You know, teachers accessing the buildings to just, to, to the, to the direction that we've been given. Will there be any clarity around that executive order they're planning to be to really? In, to, to see if our governor and MD and MDH can. I don't know how to say it, like take some more ownership over some of the decisions. Cause it's not, it's, there was nothing more frustrating than telling people that it's not, you know, feeling like we're always passing the buck on things, so. That's my first question.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for asking, the short answer is yes, as area metro school districts, organizations, superintendents, we are and have been providing feedback to the. Department of Education and the governor's office, along with Minnesota Association of School Administrators. That was, also represents the superintendent, so we have been. Actively providing that feedback. Will there be clarity? That's left to be seen. But we are expecting additional guidance from the Department of Education on the newest executive order.
So, so you, what I'm, you are like taking what we're hearing and we get a lot of emails and a lot and they're very much themed, right? And so you are taking what we're hearing and bringing that to when you go to meetings, the concerns.
Yeah, many of our challenges are very similar across the region.
Sure, thank you. My second question is. Do you have any indication? Of the duration that we would be in this, your recommended, recommended learning model of distance learning for all?
I wish I did, we continue to ask that of our health professionals as well, our health partners at this county and state level. You know, I hear wide-ranging. Responses to that, so I'm reluctant to give any hard numbers, but you know, we've heard anything from the next four to six weeks are going to be very challenging till the next eight to twelve weeks are going to be very challenging. So I really don't know, it does seem to suggest this, this will be a challenging time for a little while here. And, but we've all seen how quickly things change. So right, we're just going to have to continue to work through what we know at the time and continue to be willing to adjust as things change. We all hope it starts turning in a, in a positive direction and we begin moving back towards more in-person learning as soon as possible. But it has been looking like this could be a tough situation for a while.
Okay. And then following up to that, how, this is my last question, Chair Stoffey, how are. How are we, can you kind of reiterate how we are supporting our families? I, you know, just looking into this, when you have multiple children, I like empathize, I'm there with so many of our families with three children, you know, I'm going through this. What resources do we have, I mean, we know we've heard about mental health, we've, I mean, we've heard so many things and so what resources do we have for really our families and our guardians of our children?
That's a wide list of resources, I would like, you know, everything from technology to meals. To, you know, just direct supports from their teacher and their, and the counselors and other professionals at their school, the mental health, homeless, social work, special ed. EL, now that's a long list and we continue to, really the challenge is. We're working very hard to make sure we're keeping that engagement and communication and connection, right? It's really about connection and those relationships. So I would say, you know, the experience we've gained from distance learning in the spring and then early this fall, we're, I believe, improving all the time. And how to do that while acknowledging it's a very challenging situation. We continue to, for example, not only through the direct supports that we give through our, our staff. But continue to update our website with resources and a wide range of, of needs and supports that are available, not just through us, but through our community partners as well. So I hope that gives you a little sense of everything we're trying to do.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's so important to, to keep engaged and especially as we enter the winter months and, and making sure, checking in also on our parents as long as, well as everyone else, so, thank you.
And I'll just lastly say too, we're surveying more than we ever have before to try to get that feedback to really target our supports and focus what we can do and make sure we're having a really strong. We actually call them pulse surveys now, because we're going to do them much more often, to really ask our students, our families, our staff as well. On things we really need to be paying attention to and prioritizing.
Thanks.
Thank you Director Walton, Dawson Walton, sorry. Director Simons, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'll start, I have three and if we come back around, I have. A couple more and some comments. So I just want to be really clear on the graph that you showed about the, the site, the internal district. Per ten thousand estimates. And so those were positive case rates, not close, not, okay, truly positive, okay. That's helpful. Have you, in your discussions with other superintendents? And with MD and MDH, have you heard of any potential consideration of revisions for what the thresholds might be? Or where those percents of concern are? And the reason why I ask that is because of the increased knowledge in terms of asymptomatic cases and severity. What, what have you heard about that in your discussions?
You, you laid that out really well, we have been asking for that, we would love to see from this, from the Department of Education, a revised safe learning plan. You know, that was built prior to the school year starting and I think we've all, with the experience, all the school districts have, have had now. This far into the year, we have requested and asked for that from our state leaders to take a look at this and involve us in the process of re-establishing what those things need to be. So yes, short answer is yes.
Okay, thank you. And then my third que, third question for this round. Considering the number of days for teachers to prepare materials. So while I understand that our scorecard looks very good for being able to move back into distance, there's been quite a bit of input on the actual time that might be needed to prepare. Materials, so that kind of just one weekend in between might be potentially too short. So how are you thinking about that? Is there any room for more preparation between moving to the models?
My short answer there is, you know, we just, our secondary teachers just moved from last Thursday to this Monday into distance learning. And we really leaned on that experience earlier in the year because we delayed the start of the year and took advantage of those five days the state gives us for transition, we used four of those to start the year. Now, you know, here we are with considering our elementary transition. So I'm, you know, I'm open to that, if the board is, you know, wants to entertain that, I've been really kind of cognizant of the fact that we did delay the start of the school year and not losing any additional instructional time. Or days with the model change like this, so that was really the basis of why I'm recommending the twenty-third. Other districts have looked at and are planning to take those three days of Thanksgiving week as a transition period without. Those are counted as learning days, but there, there wouldn't be school happening to be more asynchronous. But those are districts that did not use those days at the beginning of the year like we did, so that's a little bit of context to that. But we did consider, do we need to give our elementary staff a little more extra time? Because of those early grade levels tend to have a little more of the hard materials needing to be prepared than maybe our secondary learners. So I hope I answered your question.
A follow-on to that question. Did the governor's executive order give us any more, in guidance, give us any more flexibility with those number of days? And, and I completely agree, we did choose to take that upfront, so do we feel like that's. A, a narrow bandwidth that we're trying to navigate versus having more flexibility?
The guidance we've been given since then is districts can request additional days, but they need to get approval from the state for that.
Okay, those are my questions for this round.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent McIntyre, since we last spoke yesterday with MDE and MDH, we had any confirmed transmission cases in the schools?
Yes.
Okay, one case, two?
We've had at least one confirmed case and it did result in a significant illness and hospitalization.
And that came from MDH contact tracing?
Well, our team does the contact tracing and then we work with MDH on that, but yes, we have confirmed.
Okay, so that's, that's the first one we've had, thank you.
I would say that's the first one, the first one we know about, because I, I've said many times that because of the asymptomatic spread, you know, we, we can't confirm either way. Until now, we finally had one, but it's the first confirmed one, yes.
Right, and it's out of two hundred and thirty-two cases. Has anyone determined that schools are a hotspot of transmission? Like the governor just determined that bars, restaurants, weddings and funerals are hotspots and put limits on them. Has, has that determination been made that there have been hotspots to transmissions across school districts? In the state? And if so, why hasn't there been state action on that?
That's a great question for the governor and the MDE, I guess, I don't, I can't speak for other school districts, we have not, I don't think schools have been put in the same category as bars and restaurants. But, so I would say, I can't confirm that, I would just say that you and I both heard the county say that forty percent of their cases, they cannot trace back to our origin. So the blend of community spread is really a concern for, for environments. But, you know, we also have seen our, some of our data not be quite as high as the community, although it's really impacting our operations as, as you saw earlier.
Yeah, and you showed a number of fifty-five, which was the. The rate in our schools and I believe yesterday you shared that if you took out. If you took out secondary and only focused on elementary, which is what we're discussing, it actually dropped a little bit to fifty-two. Just for that, which is still a good one-third less than our community transmission rates. So our population.
Yep, yep, lower than community, but still over that key threshold of fifty that we've been using up to this point.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back around, Director Douglas, do you have any second round of questions?
Yes, I do, thank you. Kelsey brought up a really good point about our consistency and inconsistency within our community and, and how it can feel. Kelsey brought up a, a really good point about our consistency and inconsistency within our community and, and how it can feel for our families. You know, when we're talking about how this is being approached from one school to another and one district to another. And I also have heard, particularly within our own district, that there seems to be maybe a disconnect in the communication at different sites between what the expectations are. And I was just wondering if there would be any specific communication to site leaders, to activities directors, and things like that to make sure that everybody's really on the same page about what the expectations are and how we proceed. One example is that I heard at one school that the activities director had strongly encouraged that certain activities not take place due to rising COVID numbers, even though that's not really consistent with the Minnesota State High School legal.
Well, I, my response to that, Director Douglas, would be we are constantly striving to communicate and meet with our leadership and our, our teachers and so forth, and it is a ongoing challenge. There's strong emotion across the board, even within our own employees, on, on how this virus is affecting us. So please know that we're really working hard and, and constantly meeting with our district leaders, our building leaders, and our staff to do everything we can to provide as much consistency as we can in these really kind of challenging times, a lot of, as you've heard, you know, and, and seen firsthand, we're doing a lot of things for the first time, and putting in new models that we haven't had much experience with. So that variability does concern us, but I, all I can say is we're working as hard as we can to, to address those things.
Okay, um, thank you. I guess I would encourage that all staff follow the recommended guidelines and try and remain as consistent as possible because we don't want to increase the differences in our communities and that, increase that, that division or that feeling of division. And I had another question, but I forgot what it was at the moment, so I will let somebody else go. And then, I don't know, I'll raise my hand if I think of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Director Douglas. Director Muscata Jones.
I believe Director Bristol was after.
Nope, it's you.
It is, all right.
If, if you want to wait, I can call on Director Bristol if you want.
No, thank you. My question is, what will happen for parents if they choose to keep their kids home next week because they're concerned about the numbers?
We've received, and even in the executive order, if you saw, there is a clear prioritization on not being very sensitive to any truancy actions, right? So that really just, we're gonna be as flexible as we can around attendance during this transition. So clearly, we are not trying to move towards any of those kind of actions. We really want to provide as many supports to families as we can. But I think you would see, and I advise our staff to really be flexible around any of those kind of concerning situations, if there's a fear of illness or just health and safety in general.
And the rationale for doing it on November 23rd is to give people some time to change their plans for childcare, et cetera.
Yeah, I, I feel like we need to extend that courtesy to families to, to make time to, give, provide time to make those arrangements, correct?
Absolutely. I just want to advocate for some time for teachers to do some planning and some preparing of materials, just because I do know how labor intensive it is to grab hands-on materials for younger kids, which they desperately need when they're learning online. So however that can happen, if we can have some asynchronous days and let the teachers have some time to collect materials, I just want to encourage that if, if that's okay. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Director Muscata Jones. Director Bristol.
I don't really have any further questions. I just have the comment that I think that we all are saddened to see this going on. And I know that we're getting a lot of feedback on all sides of this thing and, and just, you know, everybody's paying attention to that. We want to make it as smooth as we can, but it's not going to be particularly easy. I just know that the people that were really concerned about are, considering this a couple of weeks ago when the numbers were different, I hope you're paying attention to the fact that the numbers are really curving the way the, that they were predicted to curve. And so as much as we want to find a way to make this continue, it's getting diff, more and more difficult for us to ignore the, the climbing numbers. And so we, we are, we're with you and we understand that this is going to be a challenge for a lot of parents at home. And know that your teachers are going to be working really hard to make it as best as possible for your students.
Thank you, Director Bristol. Director Dawson Walton, any follow-up questions?
I know, gosh, I'm so sorry. Okay. Yeah, so question, Superintendent McIntyre, do you, and this is getting into the weeds a little bit, but do you know if, you know how they have hybrid works, you know, now Monday through Thursdays, really that instruction? And then Fridays, that, you know, teacher day, and will they, will they follow that model? Will teachers still have Fridays, just kind of how it is now modeled in the way it is?
Yes, we will continue to do it kind of as we have, and with the new executive order, there is that requirement of teacher prep time, which we be kind of put together and provide that on Fridays.
Okay, and then back to the setting three skills connect programs. So I remember, I think there was an option for families, if they didn't feel comfortable, you know, early on to send their kids in, their students in to have instructional in-person, they could opt out. And so is that, how do our sta, will there be more instruction in terms of like guiding around now that we're in distance learning? How to cover all kind of the spectrum of, of kids, considering that with the governor's order, the executive order? Keeping in mind that. So if families still don't want to come, you know, opt in, then teachers are kind of trying to juggle both?
Yes, so I, if I understand your question correctly, and I may not, but if I, if I do, you know, we're continually working to improve and deliver services and instruction as best we can through that di, distance learning model. So if families, you know, opt to not come in with those services, we still have the obligation to provide services and, and those I P teams will work on what is best for the individual needs of that student in that learning model modality.
Okay.
Maybe I didn't answer it. Not sure if I understand.
Well, I'm just trying to understand, you know, like how, and, and again, this is in the weeds, and you know, I know, but I'm just curious because it's some of the, you know, questions that I know have come accro, across is just like, you know, moving into distance learning, but then with, under the executive order, you know, having students come back in, you know, level three setting skills and connect, come in to the schools, and then, you know, there's still kind of a, a group that is, that may or may not have opted out. And our case manager staff, you know, are still E S P, you know, still are working with these students. And then how, you know, what's kind of the, you know, what happens then, I mean, with, with the students that are not coming into the building, you know?
So their I P services continue to be delivered through distance learning. Teacher services, therapeutic services, anything in their I P, those teams work through how to deliver what they can through the distance learning format. Yeah, so thanks for clarifying.
So the, the, the case managers are teaching both the in-person and the students who have opted out to not do in-person?
Yes, I think we're still working through, through how we're gonna do that as far as delivery. So now I, I understand your question a little bit better. Thanks for saying like three different ways, yeah. Yeah, so that's what we're working through is how to provide those services for any family that, you know, chooses to not come in. And that's very similar to how we've been doing our hybrid model currently.
Okay, thank you. Director Simons, you follow-up questions?
Yes. So thinking about moving into the distance learning model, will we be publishing specific guidelines, kind of following on to Director Dawson Walton's questions on what that would look like? Because I would advocate that we maximize the synchronous learning. So as we move into this distance learning, will we be seeking to replicate the learnings from D L A? Or will this look differently than that particular distance learning model?
I, I think we can, thank you for clarifying. I believe we continue to get better all the time at how we deliver live instruction and synchronous learning. And so yes, that is our intention to continue to, you know, maximize that, kind of like you said. Really, the challenge, I think it's probably been most taxing, honestly, in our hybrid model by trying to provide that synchronous and asynchronous combination the last few weeks, and that's been true just for our district. I think we've really asked a ton of our staff and our teachers to deliver this model. It's been very heavy workload on everyone that is connected with our students in this learning model. So as we move to more of a, you know, distant, full distance learning model, then we are going to continue to improve on that live synchronous instruction.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had was on the pulse surveys. Are any of those yet completed where results can be shared?
We are in the middle of them, so none of them have been completed yet, but messages have gone out with the launch of them, and then we will be having, be sending out soon reminder messages to try to remind people to please take those surveys for us.
Okay, thank you. Really, I have comments that are remaining. Would you like me to hold off on comments or fire them off now and then I'll conclude my remarks?
If you have any questions, I, I, I think people have been commenting all along. I don't know if we need another round of comments, so I will open it up. Go ahead and make comments.
Okay, so I think I really appreciate the model that you showed. I think that really succinctly describes the three focus areas that are the dimensions of this decision. So what's the community environment that we're operating in, in that relationship? What is the school environment? So that was very helpful to see the numbers in terms of our own cases in, in a per 10,000 view, because that's, we, we have been at this time, given that those numbers of 50 to consider. And so if I were seeing something that said 20 or 10, that would be a very different decision criteria than being over that 50 at this time. And, and again, that's, we all have different perspectives on that number. The community, the stakeholders have different perspectives on that number, but that is what we've been provided for guidance thus far. So it's helpful to see that. And then the operational considerations. So while we haven't provided a red, green, yellow relative to those decision criteria, it seems my observation would be that we're yellow to red in our ability to operate. We're red from a community standpoint, and we're now red from an internal site standpoint, especially with those detailed site-by-site percentages that you also provided for operations. So a, a 10% and higher number seems difficult to be able to operate and to cover. And then when you add in the E S Ps and the roles that they play, that certainly is concerning. And, and that's what we are hearing across the state as well. So that's my thought there. And then, you know, I appreciated Director Muscata Jones' comments on if there is a way for those, that week of Thanksgiving to kind of phase into the distance learning, provide more prep time. That sounds like a very good idea to think about those days. And then lastly, my comment would be, you know, right now, we've primarily talked about opting out options. And I'm, would be, I would just want to put a thought out there as you continue to work with your superintendents and consider that balance between local control and government executive orders that are blanketed across all the districts. Is there, is there ever going to be an opt-in model where maybe there are families and teachers that feel a little bit better about their, their balance of managing their students' mental health, instructional delivery and the safety factors? So just something to put out there to be thinking about. I'm not sure if that's come up in your groups. We hear a lot of comments about how our private school is able to do this. Those are different parameters of what we're under, certainly, but something to consider. I'll conclude my comments and questions there.
All right, thank you. Superintendent McIntyre, the issue around synchronous learning, following up with Director Dawson Walton's, can we, again, we need to focus on that as much as we can, giving allowances for student-specific home issues, you know, sharing broadband, whatever. But I, I do want to make sure that we can try to do that as much as possible, videotaping, allowing the students to watch it later as needed or as their own learning model dictates. Some may want to do it tonight, but as long as we can make sure that they're watching it, I want to make sure that they have the opportunity to do what's best for them in their home situation. So just want to reiterate that. Earlier, you said we may be coming close to shutting down schools due to operations. At what point will that trigger? Is it a certain percentage? Should we just proactively act now on two or three schools? Tell me a little bit more about that.
What I'm recommending is that you act on all the elementary schools now, and then you allow the administration to work with those site leaders to really understand what's the impact on their schools. And we may have a school or more that we would need to move into that distance learning mo, uh, model ahead of the 23rd. But it, you know, really, it's a, we're watching this daily, and it could be really any day now that we could hit one of those thresholds at any one of those schools that you saw is really on the brink. And we're just working closely with those site leaders on when is it that point? But we are really close on a number of those schools that you saw.
Right, I mean, we only have four more days, but of school. But are there, but you would commit to shutting them down immediately if we hit a certain threshold of not being able to have teachers in the school to make it safer to students? And how many do you think will do right now?
That is really hard. Hard to say. We, as you've heard our team report to you, we get updates on positive cases over the weekend. So we could get over the weekend more information that could put us there by Monday. So we're literally, you know, like I said, day to day, we, we, some of our highest reporting comes from the weekend. So by, by Monday morning or before, we could have some new information by the end of the weekend that might put us there in any one of those schools. So we're hopeful, we want, you know, we're hopeful to do those the next four days in person. But, you know, some of the schools are right there, and I think, again, giving that courtesy to families on our intention across the system to start on the 23rd. But it, you know, it's possible when we get updated information from the weekend, we could be in a space Monday where maybe a building has to move into a distance learning model ahead of the rest.
If, if that occurs, are we able to reassign teachers from that building to fill in the subs at the other buildings to keep, with the highest needs, to keep them going as long as possible?
My first reaction is I would, I would probably advise no, just because of the health and safety of our staff being so serious right now. And, you know, it'd be very operationally challenging to just ask someone to go show up in another school and know their students, know their processes in their building. So I think operationally very challenging on top of the health risk. And so my, if we have to close a school because there's a staff issue, I'm not comfortable moving some of those staff to another place when they're in a building with a staff, a, a health issue that we are concerned about. So that's my, without thinking it through any more than that, this really abundance of caution right now is where I'm at from a health standpoint.
May I?
What, Charles, one more round? What we can do, Charles, stuff is, you know, if we have subs that now we won't, we wouldn't need to use at that school, that we could divert to other, other sites.
Yeah, I mean, those subs or those teachers, yeah. I mean, if we have the, if we have capacity, it doesn't hurt to ask, so.
One other question? So if, if that was the case, if the school did have to shut down, say, let's, Monday morning, they find out they're at home, won't they find out they're at home, won't those teachers have to immediately be teaching those kids in distance learning?
That's, thank you Director Bristol. Yeah, and I missed saying that, yes, if we move them to distance learning, we're moving them right into distance learning immediately.
So that Monday, they would have curriculum, they wouldn't like be getting the week off. They'd be going right to, right to distance learning, they're following Monday.
Right, yeah. It's not that we'd be canceling school, it's just that we're moving into a distance learning format.
Okay.
Yeah, that sort of alluded me. The, the issues with teachers being absent, they're absent at home, they could immediately start teaching in distance learning. So now you get your capacity back.
Yes, yes, for those who are hopefully healthy enough to do so.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Does anybody have any final comments who want to do a round on that, or we can just go to a vote? Yes, Director Missata Jones?
Director Douglas, did you want to go first?
Yeah, we can follow the same path, Director Douglas, if you want.
It doesn't matter to me.
Okay, well Jackie had her hand up first, so.
All right. So I'll be as brief as I'm able to be. I just want to bring this, I just need to say that this weighs heavy on our hearts. All of us have been thinking a lot about models for the last six months. I want to take a moment to remember that we have a lot of staff and students that are sick and really very sick. If we have one student on a ventilator, I've heard of more than that. And I don't want to violate any data privacy issues. I'm not okay with allowing people to keep getting sick because we want to hit a certain threshold. So I want to say thank you for listening to the epidemiologists. I understand that you talked to four the other day, four different epidemiologists, and listening to the health experts and the public health experts. And I want to say to the community, please be careful and be safe and be extra super careful the next week.
All right, thank you Director Douglas.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I really appreciate a lot of the comments and questions from my fellow board members. You asked them really great questions that help clarify a lot of things for the people that are watching. We've had a lot of concern. And this is a really challenging situation. It's no secret that the best thing for students is to be in school in person. And I personally feel very, very strongly about having our students in school. And I also know that we're in a situation where that's just no longer feasible. And as heartbreaking as that is, that's the reality that we're, that we're in right now. And it's difficult and it's scary for our kids, especially our young kids that are going through these changes and not really maybe fully understanding why this is happening, or, you know, the, the whole gravity of the situation. I know personally in our house, like my kids don't like sit down and watch the news or things like that. And I think a lot of young, young people don't. So they don't really understand all the decision making that goes into it. They just know they can't go to school anymore. And so I really appreciate you taking the time to go through all of that information with us, for our parents, so that they understand. And it's just, it's a hard place for us to be. And we really have to operate in the safest way that we can for our students and our staff. And when we don't have the staff to operate a building safely, we, we really can't continue to operate in this model, in my opinion. So thank you for, for all the information.
Thank you Director Bristol. Any follow up? I don't think you have.
Yes, just, I wanted to echo what Heather just said and point out to, you know, there's a, there's a lot of feedback that we're getting from parents that are not necessarily settled with their acceptance of the criteria that are used by the MDA or the governor as it relates to, to making these choices. And it's important for everybody that's feeling that way to remember that that's one of the levers, right? The other lever is, you know, do you have people available to actually do the teaching and be in the classroom and keep things safe in terms of just the span of control issue? And then there's the other factors. But I think it's really important that it's not, it's not like the team that's working on this, the administration, working with Cory, is actually just simply blindly listening to the Minnesota Department of Health and just following a specific number. There's, there's a lot of factors here. And it's regrettable that that we're having this meeting on a Friday night to be making this choice. Because I don't think there's anybody sitting here in your view that is excited about this, nor, nor do we want this to happen. And we're all cheering for something to change so that they can make it back as soon as possible. That's all I have to say. I thank you Cory and your team for all the work you've done all week. It's been just nonstop. And I just appreciate everything you guys are doing, and thank you.
Thank you Director Bristol. Well said. Director Dawson Walton?
You know, I've said it before, and, you know, I don't think I ever realized it till then, but, you know, the pandemic has really turned the spotlight on how critical our education system is. You know, I think it's, it's exasperated our greatest inequities and our shortcomings. And it's also exasperated the joy and the happiness that our students have when they go to school. And our staff during this time, these few short months, have made the most of every single moment they have been with our students, truly. From in the classroom at a high school level, to elementary, to our activities and athletics. It's just shown me the community that we have here. It's, it's parallel to none. And I, this is, you know, I sat at our dinner table the other day and just talking to my family, and I, it's very emotional, you know, these, what's, what's to come, and not only in school, but just kind of what this pandemic has done to our society. I feel like it's kind of divided us in a way, but I also believe that it will bring us together. And we are going to get through this together. And then we're going to be, it's, we're going to improve our system, our education system because of it, as a result of it. We've been able to be innovative in ways we never, we never had to because we were challenged before. So I just say all that to say that I am, I'm really, I'm proud of, I mean, all of, everything that Cory, you and your team have put into it. I love what Director Bristol said. It's not, it's not blindly following, it's critically thinking every move, you know, how that's going to impact our, our school community. And our principals have had a lot, you know, they're really at that, in the front lines right now, and, and having to make some really tough choices and decisions. And same with our families. Our families also have had to make some really, really tough decisions. And I think all of us really respect those decisions. And, and then more importantly, our students, they're so incredibly resilient. And anyways, I just, I really do support this recommendation moving forward and, and the thought and the care that have, has gone into the models and the, and the planning for this to ensure that we are as successful as possible. And I think most importantly, even in the areas that maybe we don't feel as successful in, I just appreciate the ability to hear from our staff and students and families to improve it and to address some of the gaps. So, thank you.
Thank you Director Dawson Walton. Director Simons?
Yes, so again, I'd like to really echo appreciation for the significant work by the COVID operations team, by everybody who's been working to make all of these models work. As we talked about at, on Tuesday, this is really quite a heroic effort at this time. And while we're continuing to get better, want to continue to be more efficient, more effective, to take the moment to like step back and to say, wow, look at what has been accomplished over this time in a very, very difficult environment. And to show appreciation for that, I think is really important. Certainly, a decision to move our youngest learners into a distance learning situation is, is going to be a struggle for kids, is going to be a struggle for families. It's, we already understand what we're hearing from families on that. And, and it's going to mean that parents can't work. And, and that's going to be, this has really significant consequences, and I don't want to take that lightly. But as I think everybody has said, when we really look at this through every lens possible, and you've heard meeting to meeting, the growing data, the different lenses, the, the more work that's been done to truly understand this impact, that we're just to that point where it's not feasible anymore through, through every lens that we've really looked at this through. And I, and I also echo the comments that we do believe, I believe that the best environment is for kids to be in class. When we hear kids saying, please, they, they don't want to stay at home. When, when we see them like, please let me go to school, please let us keep our activities. When you see that, it's, I think this, this is changing everybody and their appreciation for, for being able to have the privilege of going to school. With that said, continue to echo, let's continue to get those best and brightest ideas, create a really good mechanism for, for gathering them and redeploying them. And let's continue to do the very best job in every single model and check back for when we think that a different decision is ready to be made as well. Thank you.
Thank you Director Simons. You know, I, I do believe that our current situation, our current model is not sustainable and doesn't have any support. But I think we all know that moving to DL is going to be educationally and emotionally going to impact our children significantly. And it's going to financially impact our parents. You know, we all understand that. And, you know, at this point, it is, I do believe it is pretty much a fait accompli of what is going to happen, especially over the next several weeks, as things continue to go out of control in the state. So with that, we will now call the vote. A roll call vote will be taken by the Board Secretary. Ms. Lincoln?
Director Missata Jones?
Aye.
Director Dawson Walton?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Bristol?
Aye.
Director Ostaffy?
Can you call my name?
Director Ostaffy?
I'm sorry, who was that?
You.
You.
Chair Ostaffy.
All right, aye.
Director Simons?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
All right, thank you. Superintendent McIntyre, any comments?
I'll just briefly echo the heavy weight we all feel with this. Every one of us and everyone, every employee, all 4,000 employees in our organization feel the same way. We all want to be back in school. It's where we thrive. It's where our children thrive. It's where our staff thrive. And it's clearly so impactful on our families. So we cannot wait to be back there. And, but right now, it's just a very heavy and hard situation. And really, the health, health matters really are winning out right now. So we're very soon be back to doing education the way we do it best. Until then, we'll do the very best we can to do what's right by our students in, in our district. So thank you all board members for sharing those heartfelt comments, because it is how, with heavy hearts, all of us are, are in that space with you. So thank you, Chair Ostaffy.
All right, thank you Superintendent McIntyre. Our last item is adjourned. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a second. We have a motion in a second. The Board Secretary will now conduct the roll call vote. Ms. Lincoln?
Director Bristol?
Aye.
Director Dawson Walton?
Aye.
Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Ostaffy?
Aye.
Director Missata Jones?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Motion passes six to zero. This meeting is now adjourned at 7:29 PM Friday, the 13th. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Take care, everybody.